Welcome and good evening. As Board President of the Delsey Regional High School School District of Education, I hereby certify all provisions of the Open Public Meeting Law BL 1975, Chapter 231 have been met. This meeting was mailed to the South Jersey Times-Senior and Daily Journal, as well as the municipal clerks of Elk and Franklin Township. The leaded, please stand.
United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with a routine justice system.
We'll call Mrs. Cudcius. Mrs. Beck, here. Mr. Morelli, here. Mr. Lightfoot, here. Mrs. Dewey, here. Mr. Maddie, here. Mrs. Gagany.
Here.
William.
Here.
Up there.
Here. Okay, presentations.
So we're doing the budget presentation today, right? That's the presentation we have. So as always, I'm delighted to be the opener for Mr. Collins' show. I'm the opening act at his show every year. Just a brief presentation on our budget. There is nothing new here. The board has been discussing this since December, January. It's been months now that we've been discussing bits and pieces of this. So there's nothing that you're going to hear tonight that you haven't already heard. This is more just for public and any questions that may come. So every year we come up with budget goals, and quite honestly, they don't change very much because our goals are pretty consistent. First and foremost, always, first and foremost, making a superior academic and extracurricular programs for our students. The kids always come first, so that goal will never change. We want to increase the opportunities for all students, college, military, sports bound. Earlier this year, the Commissioner of Education in New Jersey talked about having every student in New Jersey by the time they graduate enrolled, enlisted, or employed. Right? And that is a really great goal, and so that's something we'll focus on. We're always going to continue our technology initiatives. As soon as we get to the next great thing, there's a new great thing. And so we can't ever just rest on our laurels and say, you know, we have the one-to-one initiative which we've had for probably close to nine, 10 years now. There's always something that we have to keep up with so that our students are never put at a disadvantage compared to students from other districts. And facility improvements. This is something that Mr. Collins and I talk very frequently about. We believe, and he even more than I do, he believes that in our stewardship of this district, that it's our moral responsibility to make sure that the facilities are kept up to date and kept, you know, in good condition. They are taxpayer-funded, they are often used by taxpayers, some of our facilities, and we believe that it's our obligation to the community to keep these grounds and these facilities in the best condition we can possibly keep them. That's not always cheap, but we believe it's our obligation to do so. Costing. We talk about this every year. I don't know how to tell you that. I don't know for a fact, but I know that we are the school in New Jersey that has the most shared services of any school district I have ever heard of. I don't believe there's any school district in New Jersey with more shared services than we have with other districts. That is an amazing cost savings, and we're always looking for ways to cut costs and share services even further. Mr. Collins is very good at that. He had a great idea earlier this year about sharing some programs with other high schools that didn't necessarily catch on quick enough. I don't think other people think the way we think. They don't understand what a shared service is, so that kind of petered away. We're going to keep at that, and I know he will continue to work on that. But here are all the districts, all the services we share with other school districts. Transportation, superintendent, assistant superintendent, whole topic of the district administration. Nine different transportation jointures last year alone. Our evaluation research coordinator, we changed that to a student success coordinator now because they'll be getting a little bit more than just evaluating the research, but we continue to share that with them. Franklin Township, we share our technology department with them, and both districts are very happy, and both districts save money because of it. And obviously, the shift helps us save costs with our health efforts. Yeah. What's newer, 2324? So choice schools. We started choice school about 10 years ago. What was good about that is that it was a relatively significant amount of income without any having to hire anybody more to accept those students. We have a waiting list every year for our choice kids, so we get lots of kids who apply, and we always have, I think the biggest time, the biggest waiting list was about 60 kids, I believe, at one point. We had 60 kids waiting. We accepted like 10 or 12, and then there were 60 on the waiting list. So that continues to provide income for the district, revenue for the district, without necessarily costing us any money. And that's been very helpful. In fact, that money started us off on our tech initiative with the one-to-one. That was the seed money we used to start a one-to-one initiative in the district. We want to continue to create structured learning experiences. We believe we do a really good job with our AP kids, our high-level kids. They have lots of college credits. Our special education students have great supports. Our middle-of-the-road kids who are choosing not to go to college, the ones who just want to, you know, go right into work, they need a little more from us, and we're trying to build that learning experience of getting them out into jobs with our learning coach and actually having them learn what it is they can and want to do before they leave us. So it's an option show where they leave school a little early and they go out and do some work experiences. And quite honestly, that's been very helpful for those kids. This year, we're hitting this one hard, and we can talk about it, the trades. We already have, I think I heard, 120 students signed up for the electrical classes, over 100 for the plumbing class. And since we're only having one period of law enforcement, and we have 30 kids for that, so I don't even know when it becomes a full-time program, that'll grow as well. So I know that we've hit a nerve here. I know that we've hit something that our kids want, our parents want, so we're going to continue to try to keep those robust and flourishing with the kids. We believe we're going to hit a home run in September. We're very excited with the trades classes. That's probably one of the biggest things we've done for this district in quite a few years. Hi, Mr. Collins. How do you perform?
Good evening, everyone. This gets into the numbers part of everything. I know everyone likes to hear about numbers, and it's sort of boring, but I'm sure the board is very tired of hearing me say certain things because I say them all the time. But what we're presenting this year, this is a quick depiction of our entire budget. Okay, let's see, 2324, 2223. Broken up by funds. The operating fund is obviously the fund that's day-to-day activities, the normal daily operation of the district. Payment of debt, debt service. We have one note left, and this is, as an example, could be your house mortgage. That's our long-term debt, is, this is our mortgage, so to speak, for the district. And then the grants and entitlements fund. These are monies we receive from federal, state agencies that are earmarked for a specific purpose, and we have to charge to it, to that for that specific purpose. So put those all together, and what we're looking at this year is a budget of $40,282,700. It is down from last year, last year 42 through 67, some change, so it is down a little bit from last year. This is the overall depiction of the budget. This is our total numbers, and now go to more detail, but this is what our budget is being presented at. I'm not in the classroom teaching, so forgive me. I always think of pictures worth a thousand words, and I think a lot of people associate that with pictures and depictions of something like this, a simple pie graph, pie chart. I can throw numbers at you, and you probably don't remember the numbers, but you'll remember the big, you remember this pie chart. So what this pie chart is, this is our operating fund that we talked about a couple seconds ago. This shows us where our revenue is coming from. And for those board members and people in the audience who remember years ago, when we used to go out to the public and say, okay, we want this, we're asking you to vote for this, and the tax increase would be based on what we wanted, that's no longer the case. Okay? We have a cap of 2% on our tax levy. We have to now take it the other way. This is more of a revenue-based budget. What I mean by that is our revenues are set, okay? We now have to make our expenditures fit into our revenues versus in the past, when we used to go out and vote, we used to get our expenditures and kind of try to get our revenues and tie into the expenditures. It's reversed now. They're telling us what I have. We have to make the expenditures work. So just like in your household, you have income from your salary, from a job, or whatever your income is, whether it's two incomes or one income, this is your income, your expenses should not exceed what you get in salary. So that's how we're forced, that's how we're forced a budget in this day and age, okay? And as you can see, there's two big pieces on our revenue stream. One is property taxes, which is this big piece over here. Property taxes make up 44% of our overall budget. The other piece over here is state aid. That's the money that we get from the state. So as you can see, right off the get-go, 84% of our revenue comes from two sources. State aid, which is out of our control, and the state term is what that is, and then property taxes, which we can only increase 2% each year at a maximum. If we go above that, we'd have to go back out to the public, but we've kept it at 2% since that legislation was implemented. We have some other, obviously, we have to make up the additional 15%, 16%, and they consist of tuition revenue from other districts paying us tuition to come here. Transportation revenue, which I've heard you talk about a couple seconds ago, our jointures, our shared services, so to speak. We share our transportation department with several other districts. Because we're at the bottom of Bossa County, our buses going north to the special services, Bossa County Special Services, Harshway, and schools like that, since we go from the bottom, we pick up a lot of kids on the way, offsets our expenses, and other districts pay for that service. So you'll see the tuition here, 5%, transportation here, 2%. The other revenue is minimal, but it's still, it's still money coming in to the district to make up that total revenue piece of $38,182. As you can see, our tax increase is $33,002. That is our revenue piece. That's what we're saying, you better, you have to make your expenditures fit into this pot, fit into $38,000. All right? So.
$38 million?
$38 million. I said thousand, sorry. Now, this is a breakdown of that state aid piece that we essentially don't have a lot of control over that comes from the state of New Jersey, based on their calculations. And you can see that we did get a little more this year than we did last year, to the tune of $195,000 and change, so it was good to see it didn't go up. We had to flat fund it for a point for the last, not last year, but the last couple years prior, it had not gone up. Again, if our revenue is controlled, and that's one piece, that's 40% of it, it's not going up. Everybody knows in your household, gas prices are going up, heating bills are going up, all these things are going up, and now you got a piece of your revenue that is controlled. It's not going up any higher. So we're very fortunate, we did get a little more this year, $195,000, although in the grand scheme of things, it's dropping the bucket, it's still additional money, and we didn't lose it. So that was good. So here's our expenditure side. This is the amount of money, this is the things that we meet with everybody throughout the year, find out what they need, find out what they want, what does the district need, what we have to pay for is operating costs, fixed costs, things that we know we're going to pay every year. This needs to fit into that revenue piece, and we can't go over it. We do it when I pay for things. So here's a breakdown of all of our expenditures. It might be a little difficult to see as far as the detail, but the state of New Jersey gives us a chart of accounts that breaks our expenditures into specific categories, for instance, regular instruction, special education, tuition, maintenance, transportation, and that's all depicted right here. This is the percentage, each one has a percentage of our entire budget, what we charge to those specific accounts. As you see, it's increased 1.5 million from last year, which is a decrease of about 3.79%. But again, this is the breakdown you see. Now, this next slide, this is, again, this is one of the ones that I stress in our budget discussions. This, of that chart previously that I showed you, which is everything combined, in those slices of pie are salaries and benefits. What I've done here is I've taken out the salaries and benefits. This big one here is all salaries, okay? All salaries. Makes up 51.5% of our budget. So before we even start, we have our revenue piece, half of it, over half of it is already accounted for. Okay? It takes half of our salary away, we got to fit the rest of our expenditures into that piece or into the overall line. This other big piece here is benefits. Again, that's already gone, that's a fixed cost, that's a cost that we're going to incur every year regardless. So right off the bat, we have 51% and 18%. So you're looking at close to 70% of our budget is already accounted for before we even start talking to anybody, before we start looking into what people need, before we look at transportation, before we look at maintenance. We have to fit the rest of our expenditures, which includes instruction, includes tuition to other districts, includes, as I said, maintenance of the buildings, transportation costs, tuition costs. That remaining 30%, it has to fit in there. And you'll see, again, these little pieces here and the breakdown of how much, what it makes up of the entire budget. So we've done that this year, it has tied together, and as I said, we're asking for a 2% increase. These numbers here, this is to, every year the state of New Jersey has a taxpayer spending cap. You can go on there and look at years past, latest they have is 2122. You can see where Delsey ranks amongst every other district comparable to ours. So we're limited regional, 712. There are 46 other districts in the state of New Jersey that are the same as us. These rankings over here are where we rank among those 46 other schools in 2122. I won't read them, there's a handout back there you can look at, but you can see, oh, one of the couple, I love the couple of big things here, comparative per pupil cost. Out of the 46, we were the eighth lowest. So if it was 1 through 46, one being the lowest, 46 being the highest, we were eighth in comparison to the other schools like us. Classroom instruction, we were ninth. Classroom salary benefits, we were seventh. We were the lowest when it came to supplies and textbooks, but that's a little misleading because when you go to purchase services, we're 40th. We made the one-to-one initiative, we don't necessarily have papers or pencils anymore, but most of the things are all on Chromebooks. We do everything via the internet and electronicity, so that number is a little skewed because one's down the bottom and one's toward the top. Let's see. Total administrative costs. We are seventh ranked among the 46 schools. I'm sorry, administrative services benefits, we are the lowest. Look at the wrong one there. Maintenance facilities, we're 13th. Extracurricular, that's a per unit cost, we're, they were 226 in 2122, we're 89 this year. We're proposing. Again, like I said, there's a handout back there, you can read each one of them, but this is where, this is where we rank, 2122, in comparison to schools. And this column here is what we're proposing in this budget. You can take a look in comparison to, again, this is two years ago, we're comparative, so everyone's been around, and you see what things are happening in the world, the cost of everything is going up. So you can see where we are comparatively two years ago. Some of them were less, some of them were a little more, but we've been pretty consistent, pretty steady for the last few years, and we try to do that every, we try to keep it as close as possible, we don't try to raise it too much, but that's where we are overall. What does this mean? I can go up here and throw numbers at you all night. What does it mean overall? Okay? What we're looking at is the tax impact for Elk Township of a reduction of $0.29 per 100 assessed value. Franklin Township is an increase of $0.35 per 100. Okay? Now, I'll do what I know for easier. Done a little quick calculation so you can see what the effects are. So what does it mean for Elk Township residents? The average assessed value of a home in Elk is $211,000. Now, I want to preface this to by saying, these are all estimated numbers, I do not have final numbers for assessed values yet, but it'll be pretty close. These are the assessed numbers. Average of a home in Elk is $211,258. What does this increase or decrease mean to that household? A reduction overall of $61.26 in a year, that equates to $5.77 a month. Okay? For Franklin Township, average assessed value of a home is $188,766. That equates to an increase of $66 a year for that home. Again, you can see, depending on what your home's valued at, I just gave a couple examples, it's $100,000, it'd be 35, and the formula's down the bottom, so you can plug in that number based on your household assessment. But that, I said, the average home in Franklin Township will incur $5.51 a month. One cent or dot one cent assessed value for Elk Township is $357,000, and for Franklin Township is $315,000. That's what one penny is. And as always, senior citizens that are under the limit, income limit of $99,735, which was the limit for this year, 22, if you are under that limit, property taxes freeze, your property taxes do not go above what they were at the time of the freeze. So that's where we are for this year. Certainly taking any questions? Hope the lines, that's the budget we're presenting to the board tonight. Okay? Thank you all.
At this time, does it mean public, I mean, questions or comments? Or is it open? Okay. Now let's close this section of the program. I'll say. Okay. Minia, you're on.
I make the motion to approve the resolution adopting 2023, 2024 budget as presented.
Second. We have a second on this motion. Any questions on this motion? Roll call vote. Mrs. Cudcius.
Yes.
Mrs. Beck.
Yes.
Mr. Morelli.
Yes.
Mr. Lightfoot.
Yes.
Mr. Dewey.
Yes.
Mr. Maddie.
Yes.
Mrs. Gagany.
Yes.
Mr. Minia.
Yes.
Chair of votes, yes. Motion passed. Those are the times people were ready to let it go down. Time for the presentations. We'll be, yeah, Deca, is that it here?
There you are, here. I came in six, so.
Oh.
Hi folks, thank you for your patience. Just gathering everybody. I'm Fisher, and I am a marketing teacher over at Delsey High School. I suppose you know me by now, and I'm also the Deca advisor. I can't believe it's already been a year since we were just, I feel like we were just here doing this. This is my 2023 Delsey Deca International Competition Team, and they're here to give you a little feedback on what they experienced at our competition. So starting with our School-Based Enterprise team. Go ahead, Jordan.
So my name is Jordan Conrad, and the three of us were part of the School-Based Enterprise at the International Conference. Where the School-Based Enterprise, we have now placed goals since 2004, and at this conference, we had a workshop the first day, and then the second day, we competed against the other schools in our category.
So I'm David Bustarel, and for our presentation, we did how we do promotion at our school store, which included how we track our marketing communications, our visual merchandising, our cross-merchandising, and how we run our special, and how we run our special events.
So essentially, besides our competition, we had our SBE Leadership Academy, which essentially, we got to do a lot of leadership activities as far as retail goes, as well as listen to key speakers. So essentially, the biggest takeaway that I had from our key speakers was, as far as entrepreneurship goes, really just to have faith in your idea and to be consistent, and that's the key to being successful.
All right. So hello, I'm Emily Coats.
And I'm Paul Thompson, and we competed with our business solutions project. We basically took a small, a new small business and grew their name.
So it was a baked goods business, and we worked closely with its owner to market her business, and specifically, we tried to do this through social media and her website, and altering small things ultimately to make a bigger difference. So one way that we did this was obviously through social media, and we were able to track her growth, which was over five times what it originally was, and through a Deca fundraiser, we were able to sell over 85 dozen cookies in the school store, which is over 1,000, which is kind of cool for us.
We greatly appreciated this opportunity. We were able to compete at a higher level, which really helped us grow.
Yeah, and overall, we were able to learn and take away how to utilize social media in marketing businesses, and that's a great takeaway for us, and we are so grateful for this opportunity.
Hi, I'm Anna, and we participated in Thrive Academy. We learned how to build our resumes and how to diversify them so that we stand out to potential employers from the start.
Hi, I'm Ziana Slater, and one of the biggest things I took away from Thrive Academy was the ability to problem solve. A lot of the problems that we were trying to solve were like things that the United Nations recognized, like hunger and water and things like that, and we were able to like use our problem-solving skills to realize that us teenagers can make a big difference as well.
Hello, I'm Michael. The most enjoyable thing for me that I took away from Thrive Academy was the overall professional advice, as well as feedback that was given to us through multiple presenters. They gave us advice and feedback on career development and just maintaining effective communication in a business environment. So in closing, I'd like to thank the board for their generosity, their continued generosity and financial support of Delsey Deca for years on end, and I would also like to say that without your help and generosity, opportunities like these, like Orlando, would not be available to us. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Of course, I always like to point out that these guys worked very hard to get where they got to. Yes, we get tremendous support from you, but I also make them work really, really hard to find sponsors, and they were able to pay for all of their expenses completely with sponsorship. Guys, you want to turn around and show them your shirts? These are all the local businesses that sponsored them this year, which was really wonderful, and we hope that we can continue this for the future. Thanks again, everyone, for all of your support.
Thank you. Great job.
Do a meeting motion on the meetings, please. Second, any questions on the motion? Second, any questions on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Eyes having. Communications?
None.
Okay. Any citizens again? Any citizens so far? Okay, thank you. All right, rework. Make a motion to approve items to A through B as presented. Can I have a second?
Second.
Have a second, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion has passed. Make a motion to approve items W through Z as presented. Can I have a second with that?
Second.
Any questions on this motion? No questions? Roll call vote, Mrs. Katush.
Yes.
Mrs. Beck.
Yes.
Mr. Porelli.
Yes.
Mr. Lightfoot.
Yes.
Mr. DeWitty.
Yes.
Mr. DiMaggio.
Yes.
Mrs. Gagany.
Yes.
Mr. Domenio.
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Thank you. Personnel, Mr. Porelli.
I can do the same thing you just did with the thirty-one. I make a motion to approve the following teaching staff hires for the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four school year. How's that?
We have a second. Any questions on this motion? Roll call vote, Mrs. Katush.
Yes.
Mrs. Beck.
Yes.
Mr. Porelli.
Yes.
Mr. Lightfoot.
Yes.
Mr. DeWitty.
Yes.
Mr. DiMaggio.
Yes.
Mrs. Gagany.
Yes.
Mr. Domenio.
Yes.
Chair votes yes.
I make a motion to approve the following transfers for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year as listed.
Second. We have a second. Any questions on this motion? No questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions? Opposed? Eyes having.
Make a motion to approve the following resignations as listed.
Second.
We have a second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion's having.
Make a motion to approve the following leaves of absence as listed.
Second.
We have a second. Any questions on this motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Eyes having.
Make a motion to approve the following two thousand twenty-three summer bus drivers, summer bus aides, and summer bus garage staff per negotiated agreement as listed.
Second.
We have a second. Any questions on this motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Eyes having.
Make a motion to approve the following two thousand twenty-three summer substitute custodians at a previously approved rate as listed.
Second.
We have a second. Any questions on this motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions? Opposed? Eyes having.
Make a motion to approve the student, approved student, Brandon and Carrie as a two thousand twenty-three summer custodian at minimum wage.
Second. We have a second. Any questions on this motion? Roll call vote, Mrs. Katush.
Yes.
Mrs. Beck.
Yes.
Mr. Porelli.
Yes.
Mr. Lightfoot.
Yes.
Mr. DeWitty.
Yes.
Mr. DiMaggio.
Yes.
Mrs. Gagany.
Yes.
Mr. Domenio.
Yes.
Eyes having.
Make a motion to approve the following substitute nurses at a previously approved rate for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year as listed.
Second. We have a second. Any questions on this motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Eyes having.
Make a motion to approve the following, the two thousand twenty-three instructional improvement summer positions at a previously approved rate as listed.
Second.
We have a second. Any questions on this motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Eyes having.
Make a motion to approve the following home staff instructors for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year as listed.
Second.
We have a second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions? Opposed? Eyes having.
Make a motion to approve Antafiano to work two summer evenings in the middle school media center from six-thirty PM to eight-thirty PM at a previously approved rate as listed.
Second.
We have a second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions? Opposed? Eyes having.
Make a motion to approve the following staff for organizational management program for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year at a previously approved rate as listed.
Second.
Any questions on this motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Eyes having.
Make a motion to approve the following child study team members for summer work at a previously approved rate as listed, not to exceed eight days.
Second.
We have a second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Eyes having.
Make a motion to approve the following staff as the district public relations liaisons for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year at a previously approved rate as listed.
Second.
We have a second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion's having.
I make a motion to approve Daniel Clyver as the district's public relations videographer, photographer at a previously approved rate for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Second.
We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions? Opposed? Eyes having.
Make a motion to approve Renata Bedic as a summer online proctor for the personal finance literacy course at a previously approved rate for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Second.
We have a second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Eyes having.
Make a motion to approve the following tech AV auditorium manager advisor positions for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year at a previously approved rate.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions? Opposed? Eyes having.
Make a motion to approve...
Second.
Let's act crew assistant managers for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year at a previously approved rate as listed.
Second.
We have a second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Eyes having.
Make a motion to approve the following alternative school and book binder staff for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year at a previously approved rate as listed.
Second.
We have a second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Eyes having.
Make a motion to approve the following staff for the two thousand twenty-three summer school from July third through August tenth, two thousand twenty-three at a previously approved rate as listed.
Second.
We have a second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Eyes having.
Make a motion to approve the following building principals for the twenty-three summer school programs and the twenty-three, twenty-four alternative school and book binder programs as per unit agreement as listed.
Second.
Any questions on this motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Eyes having.
Make a motion to approve the following twenty-three, twenty-four scheduled being not athletic positions as listed.
Second.
We have a second. Any questions on this motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Eyes having.
Make a motion to approve Keisha Powell as the educational technology coach for the twenty-three instructional improvement summer position for fifteen days at a previously approved rate.
Second.
We have a second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Eyes having.
Make a motion to approve the following staff for the twenty-three summer extended school year program at a previously approved rate as listed.
Second.
We have a second. Any questions on this motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions? Opposed? Eyes having.
Make a motion to approve the following PLC leaders to receive five thousand dollars stipend, two, five hundred dollar stipend for the twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-three school year as listed.
Second.
We have a second. Any question on this motion? Roll call vote, Mrs. Katush.
Yeah.
Mrs. Beck.
Yes.
Mr. Porelli.
Yes.
Mr. Lightfoot.
Yes.
Mr. DeWitty.
Yes.
Mr. DiMaggio.
Yes.
Mrs. Gagany.
Yes.
Mr. Domenio.
Yes.
Chair votes yes.
Make a motion to approve the following CSD members to cover case management work at a rate of forty dollars per hour for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year as listed.
Second.
We have a second on this motion. Any questions on this motion? Roll call vote, Mrs. Katush.
Yeah.
Mrs. Beck.
Yes.
Mr. Porelli.
Yes.
Mr. Lightfoot.
Yes.
Mr. DeWitty.
Yes.
Mr. DiMaggio.
Yes.
Mrs. Gagany.
Yes.
Mr. Domenio.
Yes.
Chair votes yes.
Make a motion to approve the following student tech workers for July third, twenty-three, through August thirty-one, twenty-three at a previously approved rate as listed.
Second.
We have a second on this motion. Any questions on this motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Eyes having.
Make a motion to approve the following ESS aides for the summer of two thousand twenty-three at a, as listed pending the ESS contract amendment.
Second.
We have a second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Eyes having.
Make a motion to approve the following two thousand twenty-three security at a rate of fifteen dollars per hour as listed.
Second.
We have a second on this motion. Any questions on this motion? Roll call vote, Mrs. Katush.
Yes.
Mrs. Beck.
Yes.
Mr. Porelli.
Yes.
Mr. Lightfoot.
Yes.
Mr. DeWitty.
Yes.
Mr. DiMaggio.
Yes.
Mrs. Gagany.
Yes.
Mr. Domenio.
Yes.
Chair votes yes.
Make a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four deployment exhibits as listed.
Second.
We have a second. Any questions on this motion? Roll call vote, Mrs. Katush.
Yes.
Mrs. Beck.
Yes.
Mr. Porelli.
Yes.
Mr. Lightfoot.
Yes.
Mr. DeWitty.
Yes.
Mr. DiMaggio.
Yes.
Mrs. Gagany.
Yes.
Mr. Domenio.
Yes.
Chair votes yes.
Make a motion to approve the renewal of the following staff reports as listed.
Second.
We have a second on this motion. Any questions on this motion? Roll call vote, Mrs. Katush.
Yeah.
Mrs. Beck.
Yes.
Mr. Porelli.
Yes.
Mr. Lightfoot.
Yes.
Mr. DeWitty.
Yes.
Mr. DiMaggio.
Second.
Yes.
Mrs. Gagany.
Yes.
Mr. Domenio.
Yes.
Chair votes yes.
I make a motion to not approve the administrative carryover. I'll be sitting there. I make a motion to approve the administration's carryover date.
We have a second on this motion. Any questions on this motion? Roll call vote, Mrs. Katush.
Yes.
Mrs. Beck.
Yes.
Mr. Porelli.
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Lightfoot.
Yes.
Mr. DeWitty.
Yes.
Mr. DeWitty.
Yes.
Mr. DiMaggio. Mrs. Gagany.
Yes.
Mr. Domenio. Chair votes yes.
Yes.
Mr. President, that concludes my report.
I'll take a word. Well done, finance, Mr. Domenio.
I make a motion to approve the board secretary report in accordance with eighteen A seventeen thirty-six, eighteen A seventeen dash nine for the month of March, two thousand twenty-three. Board secretary certifies that no line item account has been over expended in violation of NJAC six A twenty-three A dash sixteen point ten C three, and that sufficient funds are available to meet the district's financial obligations for the remainder of the fiscal year.
Second.
We have a second on this motion. Any questions on this motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Eyes having.
I make a motion to approve the treasurer's report in accordance with eighteen A seventeen dash thirty-six, eighteen A seventeen dash nine for the month of March, two thousand twenty-three. Treasurer's report, secretary's report already agreed for the month of March, two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
We have a second on this motion. Any questions on this motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Eyes having.
Make a motion to approve in accordance with NJAC six A twenty-three A sixteen ten C and sixteen two certification board secretary, there are no changes in anticipated revenue amounts of revenue sources.
Second.
We have a second on this motion. Any questions on this motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Eyes having.
Make a motion to approve the board of education certification pursuant to NJAC six A twenty-three A dash sixteen point ten C four. We certify that after review of the secretary's monthly financial report, appropriations section, and upon consultation with appropriate district officials, that to the best of our knowledge, a major accounts per fund has been over expended in violation of NJAC 6A-23A-16.10B, and that sufficient funds are available to meet the district's financial obligations for the remainder of the fiscal year.
Check. We have a second on this motion, any questions on this motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Eyes have it.
Make a motion to approve reported transfers for March 2023.
Check. We have a second, any questions on this motion? Roll call vote, Mrs. Catuch?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Pirelli?
Yes.
Mr. Lightfoot?
Yes.
Mr. DeWitty?
Yes.
Mr. DiMatteo?
Yes.
Mrs. Gagian?
Yes.
Mr. Dominio?
Yes.
Chair votes yes.
Make a motion to approve the following bills as listed.
Check. We have a second on this motion, any questions on this motion? Roll call vote, Mrs. Catuch?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Pirelli?
Yes.
Mr. Lightfoot?
Yes.
Mr. DeWitty?
Yes.
Mr. DiMatteo?
Yes.
Mrs. Gagian?
Yes.
Mr. Dominio?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Thank you.
Make a motion to approve the following clinics and workshops as listed.
Check. We have a second on this motion, any questions on this motion? Roll call vote, Mrs. Catuch?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Pirelli?
Yes.
Mr. Lightfoot?
Yes.
Mr. DeWitty?
Yes.
Mr. DiMatteo?
Yes.
Mrs. Gagian?
Yes.
Mr. Dominio?
Yes.
Chair votes yes.
I make a motion to approve the following Roman University students for clinical practice placements as listed.
Check. We have a second on this motion, any questions on this motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Eyes have it.
Make a motion to approve Apex and Edusier as the credit recovery vendors for the 23-24 school year.
Check. We have a second on this motion, any questions on this motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Eyes have it.
I make a motion to approve Salem County special services to complete evaluations and provide services as needed for the 22-23 and 23-24 school year at approved rates.
Check. We have a second on this motion, any questions on this motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Eyes have it.
I make a motion to approve the 2023-2024 novel list, summer reading list.
Check. We have a second on this motion, any questions on this motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions? Opposed? Eyes have it.
I make a motion to approve the following graduate coursework as listed.
We have a second on this motion, any questions on this motion? Roll call vote, Mrs. Catuch?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Pirelli?
Yes.
Mr. Lightfoot?
Yes.
Mr. DeWitty?
Yes.
Mr. DiMatteo?
Yes.
Mrs. Gagian?
Yes.
Mr. Dominio?
Yes.
Chair votes yes.
I make a motion to approve the 2023 curriculum development assignments as listed.
Check. We have a second, any questions on this motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Eyes have it.
I make a motion to approve submission of the bipartisan state schools stronger connections grant.
Check. We have a second, any questions on this motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Eyes have it. Thank you. Mrs. Catuch? Post.
I make a motion to approve going first reasons and following policies and regulations as listed.
Check. We have a second on this motion, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Eyes have it. Thank you. Athletic, and we have nothing.
That's the first.
Yeah, I've never seen that.
Building grounds, Mr. DiMatteo?
Make a motion to approve the following facility request as listed.
Check. We have a second on this motion, any questions on this motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Eyes have it.
I make a motion to approve the following cafeteria report for March 2023.
Check. We have a second, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Eyes have it. Thank you. Transplantations, back.
I made a motion to approve an interlocal agreement with clear view of regional high school district for the borrowing buses, sharing of bus drivers, and sale of gasoline for the 23-24 school year.
Check. We have a second, any questions on this motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Eyes have it.
I make a motion to approve the school bus evacuation, sorry, evacuation drills that were completed on April 17th, 18th, and 21st, 2023.
Check. We have a second, any questions on this motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried. Thank you.
Recommend the board approve the following field trips in accordance with our fee schedule and educational significance as listed.
Don't move.
We have a second on this, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions? Opposed? Eyes have it.
Recommend the board approve the following special education tuition student placements as listed.
Don't move.
Check. We have a second, any questions on this motion? Roll call vote, Mrs. Catuch?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Pirelli?
Yes.
Mr. Lightfoot?
Yes.
Mr. DeWitty?
Yes.
Mr. DiMatteo?
Yes.
Mrs. Gagian?
Yes.
Mr. Dominio?
Yes.
Chair votes yes.
For the information of the board, Jessica Cologne announced the birth of her daughter, Isabella Sophia, and Chelsea Glenn announced the birth of her son, Justin William. Recommend the board approve the March 2023 high school municipal hip report as we presented last month.
Don't move.
Check.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Eyes have it.
Recommend the board acknowledge the receipt of the April 2023 high school municipal hip report as presented.
Don't move.
Check.
All in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions? Opposed? Eyes have it.
And district boards are all the six-year boards.
Thank you. This is Coach, you're on.
That was a lot of making motions.
Emotions?
Yeah, okay, so I'm, no, I'm gonna break that up a little bit. I just have nothing but positive things to say today, but I wanted to just like, I have a lot of things to just kind of keep you in the loop about what's going on. So this week is AP testing, and the teachers have been doing a phenomenal job at making extra study hall time for students. And, you know, I know a lot of teachers were like bringing in snacks to like encourage the kids to come study. And like, you know, the kids are just walking into these rooms with like nothing but confidence, which is, I wasn't like, I'm not even taking them and I'm able to say that, which is crazy. It just shows how like good things have been with that. So I just wanted to give the teachers a little round of applause for that because they're doing an amazing job. But along with that is mental health awareness week, and I was shocked with like how much I saw actually like promoting that. In the high school announcements that each student is sent through their email, there was a slideshow that had warning signs. So like had like lost interest in things, whatever, just a whole big list of warning signs for if you're possibly struggling with a mental health illness. And then the next one was top two like mental health issues, which was anxiety, depression, and it has, you know, things about that. And then the difference between anxiety and worry, and then there was a video after all of that about teams discussing mental health. And I just think that's wonderful because it's right in the beginning of the slideshow, so if there's a kid that like needs to see their club, they have to tap through that. And, you know, maybe they'll take a minute to think, hey, you know, I have some of these signs, maybe I should reach out, talk to someone. And it's just normalizing mental health, which I think is amazing because, you know, we don't want a student to feel singled out, like, oh, I'm the only one going through this, let me not talk about it. So I just really, I loved seeing that when I went to look for things in the morning announcements. Along with that, we got to welcome back our vice principal, Missy Pasquale, after she was almost ready to leave. That was amazing, it was nice to see her smiling in the halls and, you know, just having her presence at the school again. It did feel like there was something missing, so I'm glad that she's back. The only negative that we've had recently is the Renaissance Car Show got rained out. So everyone that, you know, put effort into the Renaissance Car Show, like Renaissance Club especially, and Miss Pasquale and Stolby, it was just a big disappointment, but hopefully we can make up for it next year and have a nice big car show. This is like the second year in a row we haven't had one, which is super sad, because that's a lot of money that's like going down the drain. But all in all, I just wanted to say that, you know, I see a lot of happy, smiling faces in the halls as like the school year's dying down, there's a lot of schoolwork, and, you know, there's a lot, a lot less pressure, so kids are getting to enjoy the end of the year. And the most exciting part about everything is only 30 days until graduation, so I'm counting down. But, um, no, I really, I do have just nothing but positive things to say. It seems that like anything that I've ever, you know, had to sit here and bring to you guys is just being, you know, taken on and, you know, they're listening to what the students have to say, which is really amazing to see. So yeah, that's all.
You've been very supportive, thank you.
Very much. Hey, there's a forum member, Pirelli.
Not a lot, but if you read the legislative update, the only comment I would have from your view is the New Jersey School Board said that they were complimenting the governor on his work with mental health. And I'm not speaking on behalf of the board in this, but I'm just thinking that, quite honestly, you just heard about the good programs that are going on in a lot of schools throughout the state. The governor's suggesting regional programs, which means taking them out at schools. And students would, you just heard my second, you see a video this morning, I'm gonna take, that child may need immediately not get a referral to a regional center that may take a week if a week comes. So I don't want to be sarcastic, yes, the governor sunk a lot, like $15 million into developing some regional mental health programs. But there are approximately 86 to 100 well-brewed mental health programs going on in school districts right now. My opinion would be, Governor, thank you very much, put that $12 million dollars in developing more in-house mental health programs, or within a county at least. Not 15 regionals that are covering from Bergen County down to Cape Bay. So that was a political statement from school boards to thank the governor, which I respect and understand, and it's wonderful. But the fact is, there are tremendous programs going on within the confines of the schools like Delsey, we're in the district, and that money could maybe better spent within the confines, meaning the immediateness of children and so forth, as opposed to doing regional. It's like, I don't want to get on hold, but it's like going to your emergency room or medical urgent care, if you had to drive, you know, travel an hour to get to that versus getting that much closer to your, your cap. So, good, but could be redirected. But other than that, no, I think everything else is for your reading.
Thank you. Mr. Collins?
Recommend the board approve an agreement with Los Angeles County Special Services School District to provide remedial services for non-public IDA students for the 23-24 school year.
Don't move.
Sorry.
We have a second, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Eyes have it.
Recommend the board approve the agreement with Los Angeles County Special Services School District to provide Chapter 226 non-public nursing services for the 23-24 school year.
Don't move.
Check.
We have a second, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Eyes have it. That concludes my report. Any old business or updates on the project?
Oh, they're pretty much on schedule. I saw that walls went up, the blocks up. They're waiting on the trusses at this point that are ordered, so it's going very well. Very, very few, very few problems have arisen, and what has, have been taken care of. So we're on the right track, they're doing well. And I can compliment Aliano Brothers with the great job they're doing, not only putting the building up, but cooperating with the school district for safety areas, anything else that arises toward the construction.
I was just gonna ask, is it gonna be done by graduation? Because I don't know when the projected date was that it was gonna be done by.
It won't be finished.
But like, I'm not gonna break your bridge.
We'll be clean.
It'll be cleaned up.
We'll be clean.
That was, I went up to track the gym, I was like.
Yeah, it won't be ready yet, it is scheduled to be finished in August.
Okay, well, that's nice, as long as I'm not like, yeah, it'll be ready, okay, cool. Okay, perfect.
Thank you. I do want to concur with you, Sir Fernando, Aliano Brothers has been an amazing company to work with. They are so responsive. If we say one thing is out of place, they are right on that. They've been a pleasure to work with.
There was also discussion about graduation, you know, to have students after the football. So they're, they're well on board, oh, hanging, you know, school board is asking, they were administration.
It does look good, though, I will say that. Like, they're doing it very quickly.
We're in old business, we're buying the new business. Citizens? Your citizens, discuss what we just discussed. I want to step on up and be heard.
Good evening, sir, and members of the board, Bill Mars, O'Gavinu, just asking an update on the Newfield possible regionalization with us.
I'm happy to give you an update. So much has happened, actually. The Delsey Franklin Elkh Newfield feasibility study was begun on Monday. We've already got a list of things that we need to supply to the institute, Roman University, who are conducting the study for us. We're very excited, we believe that it's gonna be a great project, and we are excited to see the results. Newfield had a board meeting Monday, and they are pleased that the study has begun as well. They know commitments, but they are pleased that the study has begun.
Any estimated time of completion?
Four to five months.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much.
Another citizen? Close this part of the paper now. Anything else? I have a motion to put this meeting.
Don't move.
A second, any? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you very much. I'll take that tone.